Good evening. I call this April 12th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On April 15th, the video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. And this meeting is being facilitated as a hybrid. We expect Councilmember Fender to be arriving at about 7:00. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Eric Smith, our town clerk, we don't need to conduct a roll call, so I'll skip that. We'll also skip the motion to invoke Rule 19. And at this time, I'll recognize our sergeant-at-arms. Master Officer Alexis Hogan has three years of law enforcement experience, two years with Morrisville. Master Officer Hogan is currently on the uniformed patrol unit. We appreciate her being here tonight. Thank you. I will deliver tonight's invocation, as it is Earth Month, and we have learned how important it is to find balance with nature and bestow grace upon each other. I think I would like to share our favorite poem about peace and balance. This is "Desiderata," written by Max Erman in 1927. "Go placidly amid the noise and haste, and remember what peace there may be in silence. As far as possible, without surrender, be on good terms with all persons. Speak your truth quietly and clearly, and listen to others, even to the dull and the ignorant; they too have their story. Avoid loud and aggressive persons; they are vexatious to the spirit. If you compare yourself with others, you may become vain or bitter, for always there will be greater and lesser persons than yourself. Enjoy your achievements as well as your plans. Keep interested in your own career; however humble, it is a real possession in the changing fortunes of time. Exercise caution in your business affairs, for the world is full of trickery. But let this not blind you to what virtue there is. Many persons strive for high ideals, and everywhere life is full of heroism. Be yourself; especially do not feign affection. Neither be cynical about love, for in the face of all aridity and disenchantment, it is as perennial as the grass. Take kindly the counsel of the years, gracefully surrendering the things of youth. Nurture strength of spirit to shield you in sudden misfortune. But do not distress yourself with dark imaginings; many fears are born of fatigue and loneliness. Beyond a wholesome discipline, be gentle with yourself. You are a child of the universe, no less than the trees and the stars. You have a right to be here. And whether or not it is clear to you, no doubt the universe is unfolding as it should. Therefore be at peace with God, whatever you conceive him or her to be, and whatever your labors and aspirations in the noisy confusion of life, keep peace in your soul. With all its sham, drudgery, and broken dreams, it is still a beautiful world. Be cheerful; strive to be happy." Okay. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Is there anything any council member would like to share at this time? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to ask for a change. I would like to request that we change the order of items 11E, as in Edward, and F, as in Frank, to allow a little more time for Councilmember Fender to arrive in order to participate in more of the discussion related to tree preservation, please. Does anyone have any other suggested changes? Okay. Is there a motion in a second to adopt the agenda with that adjustment, please?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 6-0. There are four items on this evening's consent agenda. A resolution approving advisory committee chair and vice chair appointments, a resolution of support for the regional implementation of the Triangle Bike Way, a resolution approving the award of FY 2022 paving project contract, and a resolution to increase authorized full-time positions for the addition of an assistant town manager. Are there any of these items that any council member would like to pull for further discussion before we take a vote? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second from Councilmember Garamilla. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That also carries unanimously 6-0. We are now at administrative reports. There are five administrative reports tonight. A performance measures advisory committee update, a planning department major projects update, a pavement condition survey results report, FY 2023 health insurance plan changes, and a spring advisory committee recruitment report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has any questions. Are there any questions? Okay. I have a couple of quick questions, actually, on item 10B, as in boy. If I could ask Danielle Kittredge or Chris Lawson. Thank you very much. Your name and role for the record.
Yes, Danielle Kittredge, senior planner. And I did want to check, are there questions on the affordable housing or the UDO amendment updates?
It's actually on the affordable housing.
Okay. Then I'll be able to.
Okay. So I was just wondering, how much did we pay for the initial study that led to the study that we have existing?
So in 2019, the Affordable Housing Plan, that one was finished in 2019, and it did cost $90,000.
$90,000? Okay. And I'd like to request that you receive a copy of that study and the RFP which led to this contract execution and the proposals which were considered for this contract award, if I could get copies of those.
Okay. Yeah, and I think an email hopefully went out, so we'll double-check, but we should have those.
So they might already be in my inbox.
Okay.
That is correct.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Does anyone have any other questions on those items? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Kittredge. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're moving on to presentations. Item 11. We have six presentations tonight. Proclamations recognizing Nepal Day, Earth Day, Parkinson's Awareness Month, and National Child Abuse Prevention Month. A UDO text amendments presentation and a presentation related to the extension of International Drive. I will read the proclamation recognizing Nepal Day. This proclamation recognizing April 14th, 2022, as Nepal Day. Whereas Nepalese citizens living in the town of Morrisville and in Wake County comprise a significant portion of the Asian demographic, which makes up almost half of our local residents, and whereas Nepalese citizens play a key role in our community by making significant contributions to the economic and social well-being of the town, and whereas the Nepalese provide cultural diversity to this area with their diverse ethnic background, including over 100 different languages, and whereas the Nepalese have been a strong supporter of the US and our allies during the great world wars and lost tens of thousands of Nepalese during World War II alone, and whereas Buddha was born in Nepal and the Nepalese community has always been a harbinger of peace, harmony, and tolerance, and whereas the Nepal Center of North Carolina, NCNC, Inc., is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization established in 1999, serving Nepalese American citizens across the state of North Carolina, now therefore the town council of the town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim April 14th as Nepal Day in the town of Morrisville. So thank you all for your contributions to our town. This time, Mayor Protam Johnson will read the proclamation recognizing Earth Day.
So this proclamation is recognizing April 22nd as Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, and whereas April 22nd, 2022, will be the 52nd anniversary of Earth Day, and whereas new and continuing challenges, including climate change, pollution, sea level rise, and loss of forests, wetlands, and other wildlife habitats reinforce the need for adequate protections for the air we breathe, the water we drink, the land we inhabit, and the animals will live alongside of us, and whereas there is scientific consensus that climate change poses a dire threat to our planet and its inhabitants, and that urgent and unprecedented changes are needed to mitigate its worst effects. And whereas Earth Day reaffirms our responsibility in the global effort to combat climate change and protect our planet for all, and whereas all species play a unique role in the complex web of life and contribute to the ecosystem services on which all life on Earth depends, and hence protecting biodiversity is crucial to the survival of the planet and its inhabitants, and whereas global warming increases and intensifies deforestation, wildfires, floods, rising seas, diseases, droughts, and extreme weather, and whereas it is imperative to recognize and understand alternative ways of thinking about sustainable living and solutions, and whereas it is more important than ever to call for a unified global response to cooperate locally and internationally to defend the environmental progress that has been heretofore gained. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Morrisville does hereby recognize April 22nd, 2022, as Earth Day, and encourages all residents, businesses, institutions of Morrisville to participate in Earth Day activities, including the Earth Day celebration on Saturday, April 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the Healthy Food Hub to help protect and restore our planet.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rao will read the proclamation recognizing Parkinson's Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is a very personal proclamation for me, as it is for many. My grandmother died at Parkinson's, and my dad's best, one of his best friends died. And so it's just a terrible disease, and I want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to read this proclamation. Recognizing April as Parkinson's Awareness Month, whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease that is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will more than double by 2040. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $14.4 billion annually, including indirect costs to patients and family members of $6.3 billion. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. And whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease, whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement, and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment, and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families, and whereas increased research, education, and community support services, such as those provided by the Parkinson's Foundation and other organizations, are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Morrisville does hereby recognize April 2022 as Parkinson's Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rabadi will read the proclamation recognizing National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among residents, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now be it therefore resolved, the Morrisville Town Council does hereby recognize the month of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town of Morrisville, and urges all residents, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live.
And if Councilmember Rabadi would like to invite the police officers in attendance to come up and receive that proclamation, we'd really appreciate it.
I'd like to present with this proclamation, and would you like to say a few words?
So tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., our Morrisville Police Department is collaborating with local community services organizations, and we are hosting a community event where council is invited, members of the community are invited, town and municipal employees are invited to come participate. It will be a pinwheel ceremony where we place the pinwheels on the ground, and this is in remembrance of child abuse prevention.
Officer, would you like to, or detective, would you like to share the names of your team here?
Yeah, sure. This is Senior Officer Strickland and Lieutenant Oliver.
Okay.
It's tomorrow, 10:00 a.m. at the Trailhead at 101 Town Road.
Okay. Thank you, Officer Grady.
Yeah.
Okay. We are now going to be at 11F. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will make the next presentations. So we're actually doing International Drive first, if we could bring that one up, please. Thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening, council. So, good evening, council. Tonight, I'm hoping to discuss International Drive and some costs related to the extension of International Drive. So let me start with some background. International Drive is a road on the eastern side of town. It is one of the main north-south connections on the eastern side of town, so that's east of NC 54. It runs mostly through an industrial area of town, and it has been shown on the town's capital improvement projects plan since 2004. There are a couple images at the bottom of the slides. The left image is from the town's transportation plan, and then there's an arrow that points to the, basically, future proposed location of International Drive. The right side of your screen is an aerial from February of this year, and it shows just an aerial image of where International Drive is now and where it currently ends. So the red arrow kind of points right to where it ends. So this slide, again, just shows the location and shows that it runs into a dead end just north of its intersection with Southport Drive. And that's a picture of the dead end. So some more background. Up to this point, private developments have mostly built International Drive. Currently, it ends in that dead end, and the two developments that are next to it have dedicated the appropriate right-of-way, and they've also submitted a payment in lieu to the town for construction of International Drive. So the reason that it ends where it currently does is due to the existence of some environmental features, which, in essence, made it so the road cannot be extended because it would have ended right on top of the environmental features instead of fully extending across those features. Those features are streams and repair and buffers. And these developments are both on the south side of those streams. So now, the town has a development named Spark under review. This is proposed on the northern side of those environmental features. The Spark development is required to construct a portion of International Drive that will be on the same parcel as Spark. You know, through this review process, town staff had approached Spark and asked if they would be willing to complete the construction of International Drive using that payment in lieu that the developments had submitted to the town. So that would be money the town already held that was paid by private developers and would partner with Spark to finish the connection of International Drive north and south. The Spark development would also complete the Morrisville East Connector. This is another road that's shown in the town's transportation plan. So in essence, if International Drive, if the project went through, International Drive and the Morrisville East Connector would both be fully constructed. So to help kind of orient what I'm talking about, here is some of the proposed development the town is reviewing. The green square right in the middle of the screen goes right around the area where the town actually owns right-of-way, but International Drive is not constructed in the town-owned right-of-way. Basically, every other thing you see that's in kind of the white, black, or red is proposed by the Spark development and would be the responsibility of Spark to construct. All right, I'm going to keep moving. Please let me know if you have any questions. So that's the background. So when designing International Drive and the full connection, including the area that the town currently owns, the Spark engineers realized that there were additional environmental permits that are needed that were not initially expected. So the cost of those permits had not been previously taken into account. And so in addition to the payment in lieu that the town already holds, the developer estimates that it'll cost up to $500,000 for additional permitting and environmental mitigation fees due to those stream features. So to cover the cost of this permits and environmental mitigation, town staff has requested up to $500,000. Both the developer and staff are working to lower these costs, and we expect 500 to be the high end of what the permits and mitigation costs might cost. And again, this would only cover what's in the town's portion of the right-of-way. So let me cover just a few key facts. I got a few more slides. Just to be clear, International Drive and the portion the town owns is not required to be completed at this time. If it's not completed now, the town would still be responsible for future construction. The town would accept additional payment in lieu from the Spark development, and the road connection would not be finished. Staff do think that this is an opportunity for the town to partner with a private developer to get the connection finished. Some other key facts are, there are other proposed developments in the area which may utilize from this connection and benefit from the construction of International Drive, but they are not responsible to contribute to the construction. So if town council wishes to proceed at this time, staff will formalize a funding plan and actions required via developer's agreement, which will require approval by council at a future meeting date. So here are some, here's a map of some of the proposed developments that I spoke of that may benefit from this connection. These are all plans that town staff either have under review currently or have had a pre-submitting meeting, a formal pre-submitting meeting on, that we expect to move forward and actually be developed. The connection of the International Drive, the portion of International Drive that's not currently constructed is overlaid in a big, bold red line, kind of at the middle bottom of the screen. And so just, I created this slide just to show that you staff feel that the connection would be valuable in terms of traffic flow in this area as it continues to develop. So your staff recommendation, town staff from various departments, basically recommend approval up to $500,000 and recommend that council request staff to incorporate this funding request into the capital improvement plan. And then, again, staff will come back with a developer's agreement to formalize the agreement with the Spark developers, should council indicate their interest in this request. And then, staff recommend this for the following reasons. International Drive is shown on the town transportation plan and would be completed if this agreement moved forward. The town could form a public-private partnership with Spark, with Spark managing the construction of International Drive, the portion of it that's shown in the town right-of-way. Staff believe that proposed and existing development would benefit from this additional access point. And the final point is just that future construction costs of completing International Drive are unknown, may increase with the passing of time. Again, if Spark development does not construct it now, then the town would take additional payment in lieu, hold on to that money, and then be responsible for the future construction at a future date. That is my presentation.
Okay. I think I see a couple of questions. Councilmember Rabadi, your thought?
Yeah. What assurances do we have that the construction by Spark would be environmentally conscious and wouldn't just destroy the existing environmental, what did you call them, environmental?
Call them environmental features. They're regulated streams.
Okay.
From my understanding of this, and I'll look toward our stormwater managing engineer if I need to, the additional costs go towards acquiring state and US Army Corps of Engineers permits, and those entities would be in charge of regulating, you know, the state and federal rules regarding repair and buffers. So the guarantee would essentially be the permit from the federal government or the state government, as well as the plan that the town approves.
Okay. Because it sounds like we couldn't complete this development earlier because of those environmental features, and now, but this developer can, and that makes me nervous.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject one thing.
Sure.
I think, and this may be oversimplifying it, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if that's a stream right there, you can get a permit to put a road or a bridge over it, but you have to offset that by some mitigation. And you have to find or pay for stream remediation or buffers somewhere else along the same waterway. So whether the town of Morrisville's doing it, Sparks doing it, whoever does it, the process is the same. But if the road is going to be extended through the stream, then it has to be permitted, and then there has to be the offsetting mitigation paid.
Right. But, I mean, there's a difference between money and environmental features. Like, I understand that they would have to pay for it if they put a road where there was a stream. I get that, but there's, I'm saying that there's intrinsic value in having a stream there. So how do we know that they are not going to pave through the stream?
Well, I guess that's what the permitting process is for, but I'll let the engineers chime in.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say, the stream is still going to be there. It may be realigned some, and that's what the impacts are going to be coming from. So it's not going to, like, it's going to go away. There's still going to be streams there. The stream structure itself may be realigned to fit underneath a covert or a bridge or some manner like that. And I would also say that half a million is actually going towards, like Frank had mentioned, to other restoration projects kind of in the same watershed. So that money gets used for other environmental improvements that the corps and the state would oversee.
Could we please have your name and role for the record?
Ben Mills, stormwater engineering manager.
Thank you.
If I could add one more thing, something I've learned in the last few weeks while researching this is that- researching this is that the International Drive had to stop prior to the streams earlier because the Corps of Engineers requires, they call logical termini, meaning it has to, there has to be a place for the road to go. They won't just permit a dead end right on top of an environmental feature or stream. Another example of a situation like this is actually Town Hall. If you cross McCrimmon, it stops before the right-of-way actually ends. And it's another situation with a stream where it couldn't get permitted at the time until there's actually somewhere for that road to fully cross and end.
Okay. All right. I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. I saw Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Can you tell me who is Spark developer? I've not heard that name, so you keep on using that. What are they building?
So, Spark is the name of the development that I'm showing on this map here. I believe that the company or entity behind it is Trinity, a company named Trinity. Essentially, they have purchased about 111 acres along McCrimmon, on the south side of McCrimmon, between McCrimmon and Airport, and are building a complex of research labs, office space, and biomanufacturing uses.
Okay. So, okay, that kind of makes sense. Okay, I was like, because the last, I know the conversation ended was, there was this cement processing plant that ended, dead-ended there. So, when you kept referencing Spark, you know, my apologies, I didn't quite put that together because I remember they paid payment in lieu for their part to do the road construction and all that from their side. So, okay. And again, like, the thing that I wanted to know is, to answer to Ann, whoever does it, it's, if we do it as a town or a developer does it, Army Corps of Engineer is strict, they don't care. Town is not any, like, I remember conversations with previous stormwater engineers, they said, Army Corps of Engineers is, they don't care if it is county or the town or anything. It is, the rules are set, so that safeguards any streams in the watersheds. They got authority federally over any water. So, that way it does. But coming to the mitigation, how much is the mitigation? Is it like 80% of the 500,000, in your opinion, or, because that's the main money goes towards?
It's pretty much the whole thing.
It's a pretty, okay. Then it's slammed, then, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This project has been on our transportation plan for many years, and one of the goals is always to improve mobility throughout the town so that we can have better flowing traffic. And I think our commercial areas would benefit greatly from this connection finally being done. It goes without saying that costs are increasing everywhere for gasoline, for products that make roads, and this is a consideration for whether or not we pursue this today versus wait. I'm in favor of pursuing this with a caution to understanding the mitigation factors so that we can make sure that we're making the road as clean and as energy-conscious as possible as far as the water goes. We have water going throughout the entire town. Morrisville Carpenter Road has streams running underneath it. We have rainwater management systems that are around the town hall. So, this area needs to be managed, not only for the streams that it crosses over, but the water that's gonna be in this area during rain events and other events, you know, goes on. So, I can see where this 500,000 could be spent very quickly with some of those measures. So, I just wanted to say I'm in support of pursuing this partnership at this time with the information that we were presented today.
Thank you. I'll go, follow back Councilmember Rao. I am also in support of getting the work done and making the connection. I'm trying to figure out how it is that we're on the hook for this money, though, instead of development paying for itself. So, what can we do to understand that we have this right-of-way? But why is it that that wasn't part of the initial contract when we accept this PIL? Do we ever have it? So, we're also able to ask for future PIL in case there's environmental needs? Or was our PIL inadequate to meet this? So, is this 500,000 just for the green square, or does it go further?
The 500,000 is just for the mitigation costs in the green square, correct?
Okay. And that's for those two other property owners that have already given us the right-of-way, but it's still essentially their responsibility. Is that not correct? Or are we contractually obligated at this point because we didn't ask for it at the time?
So, I'll say, I didn't say this in the presentation, the two adjacent property owners, right on the left and the right, combined, they gave the town $354,000 in payment in lieu money.
That's just for road construction, correct?
That's just for road construction, that's right.
So...
I cannot say for certain why these costs weren't taken into that account at the time. I do not believe we can go back and ask for more at this time.
And I see we're all looking at the attorney.
Sorry about that. Not sure what I'm doing. You know, our UDO controls, and so it basically would say that you, the payment in lieu is based on the cost of construction of the road. And I think the fact that the environmental feature is there is not, just not taken into account. It's not something that we can, I guess it's over and above road construction, typical costs, is the way I would say it.
So, we entered into that in agreement with good faith, as did they, and now new costs came up, so do we have any remedy?
It's not an agreement. We approve the, the town council approved the development with the payment in lieu rather than the construction. So, I guess it's a matter of equity as to what should be borne by the public versus what should be borne by an individual developer. And that's the way our UDO stands right now.
Okay. Understood. I just know that we've invested a lot of taxpayer dollars in McCrimmon and to activate this area, and I'm concerned that another 500,000 is a lot. Is it possible to do construction other than the green square? I'm not sure how much that actually adds to the value of the connectivity.
I'll try to answer your question, I'm not sure I understand it. Essentially, are you asking, is it, can that connection be realigned somehow, or can it be a different type of construction?
Essentially, does that need to be constructed at all? I think the east-west connector adds value. The north-south, we've gone so long without it already, and it just connects these companies rather than people.
Yeah, so, and to clarify, this, the east-west connector is the one my mouse is following now. It runs between McCrimmon and Airport. It's another road shown on the transportation plan. To answer your direct question about International Drive, it is shown on the town's transportation plan. You know, if this environmental issue had never arisen, Spark would have, private developers would have had to build it. Does it have to be built? I think it doesn't have to. It is, it has been a priority of the town for some years, but it, no, at the end of the day, no, it does not have to be built.
Right. Okay. I'm just looking for any other option than another 500,000 on top of everything else that the town has given in, especially because, as you said, this is the responsibility of private development.
What I would say is that if, if, you know, council decides, you know, that's not a road of value and we do not want to pursue this path, the town does not want to pursue this path at all, I do believe that the town's transportation plan would need amended at some point, and I'll point to my town attorney if he thinks that's good advice or not, yeah.
Yeah, the road has value. I just want it to be borne by developers as intended by our UDO. So, I'd be very interested in staff sharpening pencils a little bit and trying to get to that point. Working with Spark, who want to be good partners, and we want to be good partners and supportive of the development in this area, but I think that we have put in a lot of our efforts and resources to date. So, that's where I'm at this point.
So, if I may.
Yes.
Respectfully, there's no more sharpening to be done. Spark is agreeing to bear all the costs of the construction, including over this part of the road, beyond what they have to at their current cost. It is these environmental costs that we have to make a decision, does the road matter to us, and weigh in on that. We have to address some of the other concerns. Ben and his department have agreed to apply for the permit and monitor and manage that process. There aren't any additional monies from any private other developers to come, so it really is a decision to make or not at this point in time.
Okay. I hear that statement.
As we mentioned, we expect that those costs will be lower. We're giving you the highest estimate just so we can put it into a planning process.
Mayor. I just know in the past that when we've asked for things, we've sometimes been surprised at the answer that we've received in a positive way, but I'll recognize Councilmember Garamella, who wants to, and then Councilmember Rao.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, the part that you're missing is the mitigation cost. I think I want them to answer because the mitigation cost is by every foot, correct me, you know, like, how many feet it is that you're mitigating, and there's a high cost. That Army Corps of Engineer sets it. It's no sharpening, but it's like the price that they tell, if you are deviating so much from the stream, this is the price that you gotta pay. There is a calculation.
I understand the work, I'm concerned about the funding source.
But the funding sources are different, but the key also to keep in mind for us is, that's for future, is we are calculating the PILs by lineage, and I don't think, Michelle, correct me, we are not going deep dive into the environmental issues and the permits. That is something I feel like, because we are taking it face value. I've seen so many projects where Town Hall North, when we asked them to connect it, they said, there's a ditch, and there's this one, and they leave it at that. And then the PIL, currently frank from our UDO, is this much thing, it doesn't factor the environmental and all those things, the permitting that it is, otherwise, you know, that is a policy change that we gotta do, I feel, if that's not done. So, Michelle, correct me if that's the right way.
Would you like to approach our planning director? You've been asked, thank you. Your name and role, please.
Michelle Stiegel, planning director. Yes, engineered cost estimates are submitted with all of these PILs before they're collected, and then they're forwarded on to our engineering department to review. Typically, we do not include the environmental costs, just the road construction cost in those.
Yeah, so, that's the answer, right? So, that's a policy that we gotta change if we want to put environmental and do it, but as of now, it is what it is.
Okay, so, this is the one time that we maybe get bitten for not being proactive, and hopefully, there won't be a second. We talked about Town Hall North. Is that a potential liability in the future that we'll have to absorb that, and also the Greenway at the back of Park West Village that we accepted PIL for?
I don't, I don't have enough firsthand knowledge on the Town Hall North. I will say this one is somewhat special in the sense that there's actually, there's two streams that run basically next to each other, and that's part of the additional costs that we've run into. Does that make sense? Okay.
I think I understand our position. Councilmember Rao.
I just support the extension at this time for all the reasons stated. I, you know, I feel like learning from Councilmember Garamella about the mitigation, I think, helps me deal with the cost. And I think moving forward, I'd like to see, you know, us even look at collaborating with developers for, you know, basic, you know, transportation infrastructure costs. I know we have payment in lieu, but, you know, I just feel like the amount of money that it's required to pay for our infrastructure just isn't happening fast enough with as much growth as we're seeing. And I think this is something we're hearing from residents all the time, even the ones that are listening tonight, you know, we're not keeping up with our infrastructures. So, that's a conversation another time, but I'd like our planning department to continue to work with our transportation department to get really creative about, you know, particularly these recent economic development announcements, is, you know, how can we, you know, get, you know, economic development money? Like, when Apple announced their upcoming, about a year and a half ago, they mentioned, you know, a multimillion-dollar fund for infrastructure, and no one really knows what that means. So, just food for thought, but I commend you guys for being creative and, you know, working with developer, and, you know, thank the applicant for working with us on this. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
So, Chris, just to clarify, this, what's in front of us is the actual extension of International Drive to connect with the east-west connector that will be fully constructed as well.
Hmm.
Okay, because that is really significant for a lot of reasons. We're talking about an area in town where the majority of residents probably will never drive on these roads. We, as residents, probably don't have the need to drive down International or this new east-west connector. But if you look at an aerial, and you look at the number of businesses that exist on International Drive that have been there for decades, the majority of them are freight companies, trucking companies. They need a way out that does not give 54 as their main option out of this area of town. And what we're talking about here with the International Drive extension and east-west connector gets them a direct route onto Airport Boulevard and out to 40, where they really want to go, or 540. So, I, I'm in agreement with everything everybody said about how critically important this connection is, obviously, to the business community that exists back here and has existed here for decades, but it's really important for our residents that drive up and down Chapel Hill Boulevard. You know, I'm, I know 54 needs to be more than a two-lane road, but to have a network here in town that allows for these options, especially for these trucks, to not get on 54 is a huge benefit to our citizens. So, so that's really important, and I just want to make sure we emphasize that. I guess the ask tonight, we're not adopting anything tonight, you just want to get consensus from council to move forward, is that?
Yeah, we're recommending, staff's recommending that council request staff to incorporate this funding request into the CIP.
Okay, and that's my other question, then where is that money coming from? Debbie, if you figured out where exactly that budget is.
So, I'll take that. See, every year, we update your CIP, and we need to have cost estimates and timing estimates to balance all of the priorities. This has been ranked lower in priority because it was always the expectation that private development would take care of that. And at this point, as much private development, including Spark, that can do that, has now come to the table, and there's a gap. So, so it's incorporating that into all the other requests we're bringing you as a part of a CIP to consider as a part of the budget. The consensus tonight would allow us to know we need to incorporate in that plan for your review, and as Chris mentioned, it would be part of a development agreement that is underway in progress of development with Spark.
Okay, okay. Well, I am absolutely in favor, if you haven't figured that out yet, absolutely in favor. You know, aside from the expense that, if we could just put that aside for a minute, because I understand the argument, and I do not deny that's something that we should look at, but, you know, we've talked about widening 54 for as long as I've been on council, and it has been a struggle. We have bits and pieces that have been widened over time by development. We have a big project with DOT that's getting ready to start up in the northern part of 54. 54 that'll be widened. And all that is critically important. But what we do with our transportation network to also alleviate the congestion on 54 matters, and matters deeply to our citizens. So this is not something that I would ever, or let me put it in, this is something that's important, and that I do think we need to take this opportunity now and make sure that the relief that our citizens need, that we're advocating for that and moving forward and doing the best we can to help with the road network. So that is probably all. I made some notes. Oh, and the last thing I'll say, the permitting, so it is our staff then? It is you that will be monitoring the permitting of the environment oversight, the oversight of the environmental permitting?
We would make sure everything was built correctly and build up the spec and everything like that.
Well, that's another plus, another reason to, I like the idea that you will be in oversight in our environmental issues. So, thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Lawson, I believe that you have consensus that we all agree that's an important road network, and that you have consensus to add this to the CIP.
Thank you.
Any final thoughts, or all set?
All set.
Okay. You're going to be doing our next presentation, but we're scheduled for a break right now. So we're going to take a 15-minute break and reconvene at eight minutes after seven. So please be back at 7:08. Back into session right now. We're going to be working on 11F at this time. I'd first like to recognize Councilmember Fender, who's now with us, and I'd like to give her the opportunity, if she has any conflicts of interest or appearance of conflicts of interest on the agenda, she can state them now.
No.
She has none? Okay. Then we're going to go right back to Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, for his next presentation. Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'll give a very similar presentation to one I gave to the Planning and Zoning Board in March. Staff have called this a pre-brief. Basically, we're not proposing any specific language about tree preservation, common open space, or landscaping tonight. But instead, we are, or I am hoping to prep council on our staff's broad recommendations for these sections of the UDO to take questions. And just tonight, I'm looking for council's feedback, guidance, you know, any comments or questions on these sections of the UDO. So please feel free to stop me if you have questions or comments, please. Okay, so, well, I just listed the goals. But here are the goals of the presentation tonight. Basically, give you an update, give council an update on where staff is at with the tree amendments, to kind of provide the results of public outreach that staff conducted, and then to brief council on our, on the broad recommendations for potential amendments, and then receive feedback from council. So first, I'll just kind of review some of the recent text amendments that planning has presented to council. Here are some from 2020. Here are ones planning did in 2021. And now we're beginning the process of proposing amendments to the tree preservation, landscaping, and common open space sections of the UDO. So that's the next round. So to begin, what is the status of the amendments right now? Basically, staff has completed outreach to both town residents and what we're calling the development community, which could include local business owners, developers, civil engineers, the like. Tonight, again, presenting some broad outreach and broad recommendations, hoping to receive feedback and direction from council. And the May 12th Planning and Zoning Board meeting, I will present the specific proposed amendments for Planning and Zoning Board review. Between tonight and that May 12th meeting, I do want to say, we intend, we as in planning staff intend on posting the proposed amendments online so the public, developers, council, other boards can review the amendments themselves. During that time, it'll also have my email address, and I'm hoping that if folks are watching at home, or if anybody's interested, they will review the amendments and be able to email or contact me some way if they have ideas, if they have questions, if, you know, in between, any other way, prior to any public hearings out of Planning and Zoning Board or Town Council. So we'll start with some of the public outreach. Staff conducted two online surveys, received feedback. They were aimed at the town, at town residents and at the development community. Staff also held a forum via Microsoft Teams with the development community on February 25th. We had 14 site designers and developers attend. So just generally, from this outreach, we had a lot of feedback from residents. In the forum with the development community, we had a lot of good conversation and a lot of constructive ideas, not only about, you know, things the development community feels that Mooresville is doing well or bad, but also about other communities and how those communities approach tree preservation. Okay, so next, let's go on to the data received from the surveys. I'll try not to get too in-depth with each question, but basically, the presentation provides the quantitative data, and attachment to within the agenda item actually had all the written responses from residents. So the first questions were just about, were you aware that the town had tree preservation, common open space, or landscaping requirements? Or do you visibly notice these items? Again, I'll just kind of let the data speak for itself. Not, less than half, most of these town residents realize that the town even had these items or they visibly noticed them. So the next questions were just about, you know, what is your satisfaction with the required amount or location of tree canopy? And then, do you prefer less tree canopy, greater amount of tree canopy, or prioritizing visibility and accessibility? The next question was rank preferences on what kind of trees you would like to, you know, a survey taker would like to see preserved. Least preferred is on the left, most preferred is on the right. This one was interesting to me specifically because this is how the town currently regulates which trees are preserved. The town does it by the types of tree themselves, so deciduous, evergreen, a larger tree. And there didn't seem to be consensus on what types of trees were the ones preferred to be preserved. Okay, so this is another interesting question to me because it discussed the location on site of where surveyed respondents would like the trees be preserved. The number one answer was environmental features, with the second top answer being close to sidewalks and streets. So environmental features first, and then I interprets close to streets and sidewalks as being visible, as being accessible. And this kind of seemed to match what Planning and Zoning Board had mentioned at a session I held last year, and then also, from what I remember of the Town Council Retreat in February 21, very similar kind of responses. So next questions were about landscaping. So this isn't necessarily preserve tree canopy, but new landscaping. Just about, again, the satisfaction of the amount, type, or location, as well as the preferred character. Out of this slide, what sticks out to me is that the survey respondents would greatly prefer natural growth, often containing trees of varying heights, widths, and distribution, compared to manicured landscaping, which is generally more placed in a very standardized distance spacing, the trees and shrubs are generally the same height. Okay, so the next questions were about common open space and parkland. And just to preface this, common open space is required on developments which do not contain residential units. Parkland dedication is what's required for residential units, parkland or parkland payment in lieu. So open space is at your standard commercial strip mall, maybe a Starbucks, something like that. So just keep that in mind as we review this. Really, again, these questions are, what would you be in favor of requiring in common open space? Or talking about residential developments requiring dedication of parkland or submitting a payment in lieu? So the first question, 18, requiring common open space. The answer that really stands out is, you know, would a survey respondent be in favor of reducing or removing common open space if it were replaced by additional tree preservation? So 53% of respondents marked that. That was of note to me. Question 20 dealt with, should a residential development dedicate actual land for a park or submit a payment in lieu to the town in lieu of dedicating that parkland? Generally, the town almost always receives a parkland payment in lieu rather than actual dedication of land. The survey respondents were split on this question. There was no consensus, and this really matches what I had heard from Planning and Zoning Board, from the Parks and Rec Board. Seems to be no consensus whether, you know, the town should change direction and instead start requiring actual land be dedicated with developments. And so that's going to matter later when I get into more of those broad recommendations. Okay, so just general takeaways. The first thing is that residents really aren't necessarily aware that the town does require tree preservation or has landscaping requirements. The next thing is that town residents seem to prefer a greater amount of tree canopy be preserved, that they do not seem to have any distinctive preference on the types of trees being preserved, as far as types being deciduous, evergreen, or larger trees. But that town residents do prefer naturally wooded areas over preferred or manicured, you know, areas. And the last thing is that just, it seems tree preservation is preferred in environmentally sensitive areas or next to larger groups grouping the trees. So I got through the data quickly. That's the end of the town resident survey. Before I move on to the developer survey, any thoughts, comments, questions?
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I don't say this facetiously at all, but are you sure that the survey result takeaway isn't that people don't care enough to fill out the survey? Like, I don't, I'm not sure what we can extrapolate from 234 responses. I mean, I don't know yet if you're going to be putting forward a general change in direction on any of these points, but 230 responses in a town of 38,000...
Sure.
That's sad.
We could certainly go back out and get more responses before May. You know, I think every development that I've been involved with, at least anecdotally, has, tree preservation's been a very big topic.
Oh, yeah. No, I 100% agree with that. It's just, I'm just disappointed that we don't have a better way to engage with, I'm sure you are too. It's just disappointing.
Okay. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Chris, can you go back to the previous slide where it has the percentage? When this question, right, reducing or removing the common space requirement and replacing with additional, it's 53%, was it specified that the common open space, and make me understand that is, could be for pocket parks, could be for any other purpose too, right? What is the definition of common open space?
So at the beginning of the survey, I had kind of in detail laid out, what is tree preservation, what's landscaping, what's common open space? And so common open space is a little tricky because it, I think the name often is somewhat deceiving. So common open space only applies at a non-residential development. So there's a priority order of kind of what's allowed as common open space. It currently ranges pretty broadly, so it can range from a gazebo on site, it can be a walking trail, it could be benches next to a garden area. Trying to think of other examples. Generally, things like that. So it's, while it is, it can add more green space and more active area, it doesn't always add, you know, different developments have different purposes, so it doesn't always add more necessarily things such as a park space, per se.
Yeah, I think, totally get it. What you're saying is, anything disturbed in the natural area, like could be greenways, could be, you know, bench area or, you know, manicured, but also the parks. Because many of the smaller developments, I remember, like Wiki and I and others, were pushing for a small pocket park so that they can play there and they can, you know, be a part of that community because traffic was a concern coming to a bigger parks, and we didn't have connectivity through the greenway system. So I just wanted to understand if that was message to them or not, so that we are clear in that thing. And if that's the survey, then I'm okay.
Yeah, I don't know, it's hard to, it's hard, so for multiple reasons. Sometimes it's hard because I work in this to understand what the layperson would understand. Then on top of that, getting it into a written format in a survey, sometimes that's difficult. So I don't think it was translated exactly like that to people that took the survey. But generally, I did spell out it. It's not in residential areas, it's for commercial developments. It's just kind of some open space, you know, outside of a...
But in theory, it's very clear that they want more tree canopy, but the common space wasn't like that.
I, my take on this result is that people would prefer tree canopy over common open space, even if they do or don't necessarily know how to define it. Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, when I took the survey and I saw this, and I thought, okay, do I want like a concrete plaza, or do I want trees? And the answer for me is trees. So it's really hard. I understand the challenge you face is trying to explain to people, and that might give an opportunity for the future engagement when we have the amendments tentatively written, to have maybe some visuals, like this is what this means, it's this, it was this, now it's probably this. And you talked about layman's terms. I think that's going to be really important because UDO language is sometimes a little bit thick. So if next to each potential change, show how it was changed, and a couple of sentences in layman's terms about what it actually means, what it was, what this would change it to, I think would help people a lot. So those are my thoughts on that, sir. Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, can you go to the slide where it talked about the location of trees?
So there, I think, was this slide?
I thought you were just there.
Come on.
The...
There are a few slides that...
Not that one.
Let me know.
Right there.
This one, okay.
Yeah, so the preserve trees close to the streets and sidewalks. I take that to mean preserve trees close to the streets and sidewalks. I mean, I don't have access to those actual comments right now. Do you... I mean, I guess I would like to look at that data again. To me, I read that as people would prefer trees by the streets and sidewalks, not, could they see them from the trees and sidewalks?
Right.
Is that not how you interpret it?
I think it is also. I think, just separate from that, what I had, what I've heard previously from different people is that they feel that when they drive on streets, they don't, they don't notice tree preservation because it's either towards the back of the development site or just... So I agree with what you said also. That is what the answer says, so people would like it, you know? And those trees can help mitigate heat from the asphalt or concrete also.
Right. And I think in some of your recommended, like staff recommendations, it does say, like, possibly, like, one of your options to look at is increasing setbacks.
Hmm.
So that would, could address adding trees.
Yeah, and so that could be increasing or decreasing, depending on the setbacks, depending on what types of flexibility. So maybe increase at the front, reduce at the back, or even vice versa.
Okay. All right. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions on this portion? I see that we have two people want a second question. No? Councilmember Rabadi?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I, I don't know if this is true in Mooresville, but I come from a community where some of the trees are 100 years old. They were there before the streets. And trees close to streets and sidewalks is a good way to have the streets and sidewalks torn up by the trees. So, I mean, we, like, we want to kind of think ahead to... So, I mean, we, like, we want to kind of think ahead too on the question of trees and sidewalks and, you know. I haven't seen much of that around here, but, you know, but I'm just saying it's an ugly, ugly thing.
Yeah, I grew up in a town where the trees in between the sidewalk and the street, they were causing problems, so.
Yeah.
Just a thought, but that's a good thing to keep in mind. Okay, if you want to move on to the next portion of your presentation?
Sure. Okay, so that was the resident survey. Next, I'll kind of go over some of the development community survey. The written responses are attachment one in the item, in the peak item. So, first question, just kind of demographically, you know, what kind of level experience do you have developing projects in Mooresville? Mostly medium, some very high. Just a kind of interesting tidbit. So, the real first question, would you be open to the town requiring existing tree canopy to be saved along the front property line? And so, the answer is somewhat split with no's or maybes being the highest. In the development forum, the thing I noticed was that it was the, more the business owners that were worried about if it's, if tree canopy is reserved in front of every site, how is that going to impact my retail or commercial business and the visibility of it? I just wanted to point that out. Found it interesting. So, the next question is about preferred manner of tree preservation priority. So, very similar question that was from the survey given to the residents, and the top preferred priority was along environmental features such as floodplains, wetlands, repairing buffers. This matched the residential survey. The second most preferred was larger trees.
Chris, if I can interrupt you. Is part of that because that's required by state anyway, so we all know that that has to happen to a certain extent?
I would say that probably influenced their decision somewhat, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And then the least, most preferred, I guess, the one they did not prefer the most was the location adjacent to street sidewalks and greenways. These are the development community. Nobody preferred that as their top preferred. So, question seven, okay. So, this is a question, basically, if permitted, would you preserve additional trees if granted flexibility or reductions to other UDO requirements? This one had, this question had a follow-up written question, which I found the answers to be somewhat interesting from the private side of development. There was some fairly detailed answers. If you haven't read that, I would encourage you to. Again, please list your preferred option for flexibility reduction. Most preferred was setbacks and lot coverage. Again, my take on this is that it allows more site design flexibility. So, something we heard in the development community forum was, the way the UDO regulates trees, it is a flat standard across sites which could really vary in terms of their topography, environmental features, the amount of trees. So, some flexibility on, you know, maybe where a building could be positioned, or a parking lot could be, could be put on site, that would be appreciated. That's what I remember hearing from the development community on that. Question nine was about trying to figure out a way to encourage existing tree canopy to be preserved for street yard buffers, for perimeter landscape buffers. Most of it was no's or maybe. So, something that gets pointed out, at least, you know, through reviewing development and working with these developers, they say that when they're looking to build on a site, preserving trees around the entire site can be troublesome to them just because they need to grade or clear, the roots can get clipped, things like that. So, not saying that that can't happen, but that's something we had heard through the development community forum. Last question was just about, just kind of gauging the temperature, I guess. If artwork were allowed as a common open space, you know, would a developer take advantage of that option? Pretty split, yes, no, 57, 43. I don't have a lot of follow-up on that at this time. So, just some general takeaways from the development community survey. They prefer flexibility in the location of requirements within a development site, and particularly the flexibility and the requirements of where tree canopy must be preserved. So, you know, one developer, a civil engineer stuck out, he said, you know, if the town's goal is to save trees and you have a certain number, percentage of trees need to be saved, does it matter to the town where those trees are as long as we're preserving them? So, those were some of the questions that were kind of bouncing around, and I think when I get later to the overall general recommendations, I think we're going to recommend that the priority order be changed, and that's where I would appreciate feedback from town council, Planning and Zoning Board, as far as, what are the town's true priorities? Where do the trees on site, where's it really valued to be on site? Does it? I think we still can recommend that there is some priority order, but maybe town council feels that as long as trees are saved somewhere on that site, it doesn't matter where or so. But that's something we'll get to later in my presentation. So, the highest preference, if there was a priority order, is within those environmental features. So, that's wetlands, floodplains, repairing buffers, could be extended if there's some other environmental feature I'm not aware of. They, the developers did express concerns with visibility to a commercial site. So, if, you know, a heavy amount of existing tree canopy is required to be preserved between the road and the, you know, a development, they were worried, are folks driving by going to be able to see my shopping center, see my, you know, restaurant, something like that, and know it's there, and just the viability of retail? And last thing is just, they would prefer flexibility as it relates to where a building or parking can be placed on site. So, just to explain that one a little more. So, generally setbacks are from each property line, they're fairly standard, which kind of positions parking and the building more in the center of every site, generally speaking. So, that's where the flexibility in terms of maybe reduced setbacks on one side if it's increased on another, could come into play. Okay, so before I move on from the developer survey, I'm going to get into a little UDO refresher. I'd like to take a second to stop and ask if there's any questions or comments.
I guess I'll start. You talked about the setback requirements. Is it currently, there's a set front and a setback, and it's not just a total that they can distribute as they see fit within some range? Is that an option?
That is not currently an option. It is, it is set from, the front's probably going to be 30 feet from the front property line, 20 feet on each side, and then 20 or 30 feet from the rear. That's fairly standard. It differs per zoning district, but it's not a, it's not a total that you can, you know, one side can be, yeah. It's not, yeah.
So, is that something to possibly explore, to give them the flexibility?
That is, that is something could be explored, yeah.
And, yeah, that's what came to mind. There was a couple of other things, but if, anyone else? Councilmember Rabadi?
I think that in addition to the potential for the retail not to be seen if there are trees in the front next to the street, I think there's also a safety issue there. I mean, because if you're trying to turn out onto a street and there's, you know, there's a ton of trees there, I do think there's a safety issue there. I don't want a concrete jungle budding up to each street either, but I do think, like, we have enough problems, quite honestly, with places in the town that it's dangerous to make a left or right turn. I don't think we want to start adding places where there's like, you know, six-foot trees and you can't see anything either.
Yeah. So, if a developer voluntarily chose right now to save trees along their street yard, along the street, the only thing that really regulates that right now where you could have that visibility is what's called a site triangle. So, there are maybe some other options, but that's the only thing right now, so.
But they don't, generally speaking, want to do that anyway, do they?
Generally, not in my experience, no.
Okay, so, all right then.
Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, just an observation. I mean, I think that, just over the last few years, there's been a lot more focus in Mooresville on sustainability with our sustainability initiatives, and at the national level, there's a lot more focus on reducing carbon emissions, you know, goals set forth by President Biden, and, you know, I think that whatever we can do to collaborate with our development community to make sure that we're doing what we can to preserve more trees than just getting away with the minimum, which I think, you know, 10, 12 years ago, we weren't talking as much about carbon emission reductions and credits and offset credits and things like that. So, I just don't know, you know, if there's opportunities even for these developers to work on, you know, with the monies that are coming in from the government, even in the infrastructure plan for, you know, sustainability. So, just, you know, out of the box, thinking of what we can do, because when I see comments like, express concerns with visibility to a commercial development if substantial amounts of trees are required to be planted, I mean, we want to have trees to not only provide shade, but to provide, you know, the ability to take carbon out of, you know, the air and all those things. So, you know, I guess it's just, you know, how do we continue to engage with them in this kind of conversation, making it more of a collaborative effort than, well, you want to preserve the trees and I want to have development on one side? So, anyway.
All right, thank you.
I don't see anyone else. I'll take a second bite at the apple though, because I'm, I was thinking, I understand their concern about having visibility for retail, but I think of Weston Parkway in Cary and how pretty that is, and there's lots of buildings, but it's really a tree-lined street, which is pretty. So, we don't really have much of that in town, and I know McCrimmon, we're looking to do something different, we're looking to put the buildings right up to the street, hoping for some retail there, so that makes sense. So, I think that I would support giving some flexibility and not having some strong requirements about trees along the street, but that would be our preference for certain things that don't need retail and visibility. Like the SAS campus, you can't see any of it, but it's huge in Cary, for example. So, having woods around are really nice, and there might be parts of McCrimmon that would, that would be appropriate for. So, those are my thoughts about that. Anyone else want to, Councilmember Garah Mello again?
I think it's a good conversation here, but I think we need to step back and look at it more holistic. If we are asking a certain ask, so it's, there's a give and take here where I feel like the sustainability initiatives, if, you know, we had to make, bring that also into the mix, if they are having solar panels or something that apartments or, you know, the businesses are ready to put, what can we give them? And not just the tree canopy, which is great, but from their point of view, you know, how can we make it better? And the whole idea we are doing is for, you know, more, you know, better environmental conditions. So, I think I would like to get myself educated, like, you know, as other towns, what is the give and take that they have? Not just looking from the lens of a tree canopy, but from other areas which will help in the long run.
Councilmember Rabadi, did you have another thought?
Me, no.
Okay. Proceed, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, that wraps up the surveys, both the resident and the developer, development community. The next portion, I've just called the UDO refresher, and I just want to kind of cover just really basically how the UDO regulates certain developments. So, the first thing I'll cover is tree preservation, and it's dictated mostly by two regulations. So, the first one is the retention standard table, and all I mean by that is how many trees have to be saved. Second one is the priority order, and that's which trees have to be saved. So, between Planning and Zoning Board and today, we've added the bottom of this slide, it discusses the local legislative authority that Mooresville has, and it kind of discusses some history for other tree preservation bills within the General Assembly. So, just wanted to clarify that. Mooresville does not actually have the authority to regulate single-family detached dwellings or duplexes. So, I'll start with the retention standards. Again, this is how many trees have to be saved. So, there's just kind of a lot on the screen, but if you look at the table, you'll work left to right. So, you'll first identify, if you go to build on an undeveloped site, you'll identify the percentage of that site that is currently covered in tree canopy. Okay, so let's just say at the top, it's 92 to 100% covered in tree canopy. So, let's just say it's 100% covered. Next, you'll work to the right, and you'll determine, are you building single-family detached, are you building townhomes, or are you building a commercial development? Depending on that, if you're building a Starbucks, you're in the far right column, so you have to save 10% of that existing tree canopy. And it's a bracketed scale right now, so you can see it's kind of sliding. And then at the very bottom, if there is 0% tree canopy or 6%, you don't have to save anything that's currently on site. There's a brief example down at the bottom if you look and need another example, but that's generally how you figure out how many trees on a site has, how much tree canopy on a site has to be preserved. Then you'll use table 544B, which is the priority order. So, once you figure out how many, what percentage of trees you have to save, then you have to figure out which trees are required to be saved. And this is the priority order, it's 1, 2, 3, 4. So, when I'm reviewing a plan, the developer will have a landscape architect, forester, arborist actually design this portion of the plan, and basically, it kind of speaks for itself. If there are groups of deciduous trees, that's the very first priority order. It does not matter where those trees are on the site. It could be smack dab in the middle of where you want to build your building, those have to be preserved first, and then you're supposed to work from there. So, once you've reached, you know, let's say you have to save 10% of your trees, if 8% of the site's covered in deciduous, that's the first grouping that has to be saved, then you can move on to that additional 2% to get to your total of 10. I think I explained that. Does that kind of make sense? Okay. So, again, based on kind of the survey results, it doesn't seem that folks really have a strong preference on what type of trees have to be saved. Different communities do it kind of differently. Cary puts, Town of Cary puts a lot of emphasis on what they call champion trees, what Mooresville calls specimen trees, they're basically the same thing, and those are your bigger trees. But different communities do it different ways. So, this is the way Mooresville currently has it set up, and I'll just say, it almost rarely gets to priority order four. Priority order four, what I just call the leftover trees, it almost never gets there, it's almost always a deciduous, deciduous, and it's a mixture of deciduous and evergreen. Need some water. Okay, so, we'll move on now to just kind of staff's broad recommendations. The last few slides were the refresher, now let's move on to kind of the recommendations. So, tree retention standards. So, how many trees must be saved? It's currently a sliding scale based on the amount of existing tree canopy cover. Staff currently are, a broad recommendation is a flat percentage across all sites. So, you know, simplify it, keep it an even number. Every site, when a developer comes in, they know exactly how many trees they have to save. Staff's not relying on a landscape architect to design a plan that then we read and we confirm the numbers, it's just a flat site, a flat percentage. We also will most likely recommend to have, so if, let's just say, staff proposes ultimately 5% of entire site has to remain in tree canopy cover, that the site has to replant additional trees to bring it up to meet that 5% if there's not 5% tree canopy cover currently. Okay. So, basically, just a requirement to plant additional trees if you do not have the required amount of tree canopy. So, all these kind of slides that I'm getting into now, any feedback, any comments or questions, this is where, you know, when I or planning department staff are designing these amendments, this is where some of that feedback would be very, very helpful. One specific question I have on this slide is the flat percentage across all sites. If you go back to how many trees must be saved, it's currently broken between residential and then non-residential, with residential being required to save a greater percentage of tree canopy. So, the question I have, maybe tonight, maybe later on, is, does the town believe, does the town feel that residential sites should still be continued to save additional trees compared to commercial sites? Or is just a complete flat percentage across all kinds of uses, you know, appropriate?
We have a couple of questions now. Do you want to address those? Okay, first, if you could go back to slide 20. It would help me a lot if we added two more columns to this. So, it would actually be a column essentially for the top line, 92% times 19%, and then you have a column that has the actual save. So, it's not a percentage of a percentage, but the actual end value of what we're actually saving. So, you do that twice. So, once for each of those columns, and I think that would be very informational and helpful to people to see what those numbers actually are, because right now you look at it and like, oh, we're saving 29%, or saving 27%. That's not really the case. So, I think that would be a really good first step as we talk to residents.
Yeah, and that number is going to be greatly dependent on the size of the site also. So, we could do a standardized table.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you mean by that.
So, you know, so let's say a site's one acre and has 100% covered in trees versus a 10-acre site. The numbers, the total square footage and the actual amount saved is going to be very different. So, it wouldn't be like a standardized number we could reduce, replicate every time. I think if I understood you correctly.
Well, whatever the existing tree canopy cover times the minimum percentage of existing tree canopy cover to be retained, you multiply that by that, and then you have a number. That's what we're calculating now, and that's what we're basing the number of trees that they have to save on. But that's not obvious from this, what that number actually is. So, I just want our table to be very clear about what the actual final save is. So, I'd like to make that request as we move forward with our outreach and make sure everyone's aware of that. And if you want a, a thought about what the actual flat percentage should be, I think 30%. And that's generally what Wake County is going for. And I know that's not, that's very aspirational. But if we're going to do any kind of catching up, we need to set pretty high standards. Then I saw Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Sure. Can you go back one more slide? Add a question first and then comment. On, under local legislation authority. What did it, what does this mean? Would have removed authority from municipalities without local legislation? I guess first, what is local legislation in this case?
So, let me try not to give too detailed answers. So, in North Carolina, legally, the state controls all police powers and delegates it to some local towns. So, Morrisville's got a, a few different, what they call local legislative authorities, where the state has specifically delegated that Morrisville can do something that, you know, they, they didn't delegate my hometown to do a couple hours away. So, several years ago, I can't remember the exact year, somewhere in the, in the 2000s, Morrisville was granted the authority to preserve certain types of trees. So, that was great, at the time, it was greater than other municipalities. This bill would have removed basically everyone's ability to, every town's ability to preserve trees. So, the way I understand it, since Morrisville's gotten that local authority, it has been generally more accepted that your zoning authority provides limited authority to preserve trees. So, more towns have started taking advantage of that. This bill, I think the 2021 bill, would have removed, would have explicitly said, no town unless granted a local authority can preserve any trees of any kind.
But if they already had local legislation, they would still keep that?
Right.
So, but does our, does the current Morrisville local legislation include percentage of trees? Address percentage of trees?
I don't believe that it does.
What, did you say it was types of trees?
It says, it says that the municipality may adopt ordinances to regulate the planting, removal, and preservation of trees and shrubs on public and private property, but it shall exclude property developed for single-family or duplex residential uses and shall exclude normal forestry activities.
Okay. Do other municipalities have local legislation for, that allows them to preserve a higher, a higher percentage of trees?
As far as I'm aware, no municipality has a specific set percentage. This bill was from the year 1999. It included towns throughout the state, but also locally Apex, Cary, Garner, and Morrisville.
So, how, how do we compare to other municipalities like Cary, Apex, Holly Springs? What's their percentage of trees that they require?
So, it, it varies somewhat, and I am pulling up my research. So, very somewhat, the city of Raleigh, from what I've found, requires 10% across the city, except for in their larger residential zoning districts, which requires 15%. The, let's see. Cary, from what I've found, it almost focuses entirely on what they call those champion trees, which are, which are what Morrisville calls specimen trees, which are just 24 inches or 30 inches or bigger, and, and really focuses on those larger trees. Apex ranges from 10 to 30% of a gross site, but it depends on the location within town. They had broad locations as far as what side of 540 you're on, you know, what north, south items like that. And then Holly Springs ranged from 10 to 25%. There's a somewhat different because it's made up of not just tree preservation, but it can include active rec space, flexible space, and tree preservation.
Okay, yep. All right. So, I guess my feedback would be that, I guess, two things. I, I definitely, well, first, I'm so very glad that we are looking at the UDO and addressing the tree preservation ordinances. I like, I'd like the suggestion of doing a flat percentage. I would like to see us do 25% for the apartments and townhomes. I'm not, I, I don't know how I would feel about asking commercial development to be even 20%, 20, 25. I'm not, I think that would be asking a little much. But I'm, I'm open to what the other council members think on that. And then, if we did ask for 25% trees retained, if, if a, if a parcel of land has no trees whatsoever, I think it would be asking a lot of that developer to plant enough trees to bring it up to 25%. I think I'd like to see some sort of compromise made there. But I'm curious to see what the council members, other council members. I mean, my, my concern is more around taking a parcel of land that is all trees, a majority of trees, and clear cutting what's there. I think we'd be asking a lot of developers, if it's no trees, to plant 20, 25% trees. Although, in an ideal world, I'd love that. And then, what was the last thing that was a question for us? Oh, the types of trees. I, I don't have a preference on the types of trees. I don't think we need to focus on the specimen trees, like the deciduous or the mechs of trees. I think it's fine. And I think i- if we do give, I think we should give the developers, oh, I know what other question. We should give them flexibility. However, one question I did have, the, the trees that they are required to save along the riparian buffers, do those go into the percentage of trees that they're required to save?
They currently can.
Currently can. But does it? Do they, do developers, when they give you that site plan, do they use the number or the percentage trees along that riparian buffer to?
Yeah, and-
Meet that requirement?
Yes, and, and something I'll say that I've noticed is those environmental features. So, I haven't done a study on this, but, but my, my take on some of the things we've heard as far as public feedback is that trees are often pushed to the back of a site or, or hidden somewhere. And I think that happens, yes, because they have to say, developers have to say those anyways, but also because they couldn't build a building near there, so the building went somewhere else and the trees kind of almost naturally went there through the development process. But yes, they, they certainly do take advantage of opportunities where they already have to save trees and, and, and kind of count it towards towns' regulations also.
Well, so would the developers be amenable to just increasing the, the number of feet? Like, as part of me, increasing that percentage of trees that's required, just save more of the trees along the riparian buffer?
So, yeah, if, if, especially if, if the town's approach is going to be environmental, not to get too deep into it, there's two types of zones for riparian buffers. The outer zone, there can be some limited removal. The town could certainly increase it. So, it's a 50-foot on each side of a stream bank. The town could increase it to, you know, a different number. And that could, I, I don't know if it would impact the quality of the water, but theoretically, that's where the state has identified as, as keeping, you know, doing some environmental protection. The town could double down on that and increase that riparian buffer to a higher number.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. That's all I have.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Yeah, just a couple of, like, a couple of thoughts. And one thing that I've been reading about is what other cities have been able to do, like in Charlotte, and I researched some things going on in Baltimore, where they would take a goal of saying, okay, over the next 25 years, we would, our goal would be to preserve a certain, to preserve, let's say it's 50% of our tree canopy. So, you take the existing amount of developable, develop, developable land in Morrisville, and you'd say, okay, we want to come up with a number of, this is what we would do to hit that number. Like, let's say it's 50% or 40%. And then, what we would do then is go and say, okay, we, you talk about the flat fee, a flat rate, percentage. What percentage would that be for residential and the other? So that we could get to preserving the rest of the, the development of Morrisville so we can preserve more trees? Because where I get frustrated is that we see, you know, when you went to that Slide 20 where it had all those different percentages, like the mayor said, it's very hard for the public to say, okay, how much trees are we really, you know? Where's the opportunity to, to save the most amount of trees possible over the next 20 to 30 years? So, if we set that goal for ourselves, even though we, I know that I won't be here, but, you know, what will we, what will we do to get there, right? Because, I mean, I think if we could show the public that, you know, we really want to preserve a certain amount of trees and hit a goal. Are we already doing that? Maybe we're already doing that, but I just was-
I, I don't know if we're doing that, but that's an interesting point that I thought of while I was reading the results of the survey, is it seems that there, I don't want to say marketing, but there hasn't, there's not public knowledge of some of the towns' requirements that already have or where those trees are necessarily being saved.
Yeah, and the reason is like, like I know in Charlotte, they have like, it's so different than what you're talking about. They have tree save areas. So, when the residential, you know, which seems low to me, it's like 10% of residential. And then there's incentives that you can provide developers if they preserve more than the canopy than they were required to preserve, or if they plant a trees with different type. It's very confusing. Density bonuses and all those like that. But where can we get collaborative to incentivize developers to invest more in preserving the trees? And maybe that's something that we as a council can think about is, what is the, you know, so you already gave us an example, the grocery store, okay, 43,560 square feet, you know? I'm not as good at math as Councilmember Garamella, but it's about 15%, I think. Or another, we have a lot of engineers here. But it's about maybe 15% of the total amount, you know? Which is, hopefully, we could get more than that. But if we took the total amount of trees left in Morrisville on developable land, and we set a number to say, we want to preserve 50% of that, then what kind of a rate would we have in, you know, both the residential and the non-residential to say for the remaining however miles left we have to build, we're going to save this percentage of trees? So, by setting that goal, wouldn't that be easier than, I'm just giving you ideas, just thinking out of the box. So, if I'm totally off, please, you could chime in and say, Steve-
I'm calling along. No, I, I'm writing all the ideas down as, as you go. It's-
Okay. Just, just some ideas to share with the public and the council, so.
Councilmember Scruggs-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could keep this slide here while I ask questions, that would be really great. When I was looking at this table, the, the math does kind of get a little bit confusing when you do a percentage of a percent of a, of a parcel, right? So, ultimately, if we have a fully treed parcel for a single-family attached, this is not single-family detached, but attached group living or multifamily, there would be a 19% tree save. That would be the maximum, or the, not the maximum, the minimum that would be requested from the site plan.
Correct.
And riparian buffers are included in that calculation as well. One thing that I am a little concerned about is if we just do a flat percentage. There are so many difficult parcels that we have today that are left to be developed that these standards, minimum, they might have to be even higher because there's very sharp elevations, there's different challenges, environmental challenges. So, it, it's kind of a, one of the decisions that we're going to have to make is, is there a minimum that we'd like? And I would also like to see if they exceed it, is there something that we can do to incentivize them to be better corporate citizens, be better developers, to add more trees? What, what can we do to help them add to the tree canopy? When you, we just have minimums, that's only part of the story. What, what else can we do to make it even better for the town and, and ultimately the residents of that project? For the non-residential mixed use, we see that currently it's the maximum of 10%. And it might be difficult to be higher than 10% depending on the type of project that it is and so forth. So, again, if we have a minimum and then we have options for additional tree save, that, I'd like to see what that looks like, if that's allowed, you know? But we want to have the ability to recognize and encourage more tree save when possible. So, I would like to know the impact of some scenarios if we ask for 20% minimum tree save, 30% minimum tree save. It's really nice to sit up here and say, let's save all the trees that we can. But what really does that happen to a project? Are we going to only have certain types of projects? Does that really affect the single-family more than the non-residential? I mean, what, what's an overall possible trend that could happen? It'd be nice to kind of understand that a little bit better. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Welcome. So, if I, if you could respond to some of your, your comments, just, I, I do want to note one thing is, if trees are required to be preserved for a neighborhood, so townhome neighborhood, they're not on individual, single property owner's homes. It's on HOA-owned space. So, we're not, the town's not placing a burden on that specific homeowner for the entire neighborhood. And to some of the other points about the incentives, just some of the other things that staff has been bouncing around ideas on are kind of what are the true values? Kind of if the UDO requires a broad range of things, is the town really specifying on one, one specific value or not? And then what are some of the trade-offs that, you know, could be given based on the current UDO standard? So, those are things that are bouncing around, and, and I'm hoping to get back in, in details with Planning and Zoning Board next month.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
So, I try not to repeat. I, I kind of agree with a lot of what's been said, but, and I like, we need to stick on this slide because this chart's the bane of my existence too, and it sounds like of yours too. Because I remember when we created this, and it was- Because I remember when we created this, and it was, the idea was to try to preserve existing trees and trying to be flexible, but I'm hearing that this is not, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, this is really not a, an easily maintained system that we have today. This is overly difficult.
See, I'll describe it in this way, it's, once, once I got it, I got it, but when you have a new developer, a new site designer coming in, they look at it and like this, kind of with that face, and the, some of the feedback I got was, hey, Raleigh just has one flat percentage across every site, so every client I work with knows 10% right off the bat.
Okay, yeah, and that, we didn't want to do that, because we, because if you do that, if, and, correct me if I'm, if you do that, let's say you use 10%, like in your example, if there's not already enough trees on the site, they have to add to get up to 10%, is that right?
That's one cause. Another thing could be that a site's smaller, and thus that 10% almost becomes somewhat regressive compared to a larger site. And I'll clarify, I think a flat percentage might work better, but this, if this chart remains right here, that, that's, that would be completely fine with me also. I think there's other areas that are, can be identified.
Okay, okay. Because I don't know, I don't, honestly, right now, tonight, I couldn't tell you what I prefer, whether a flat, a flat percentage, or to stick with what we have and tweak the percentages. I think what concerns me about doing a flat, and you've heard, you've heard others say, you know, what is that, samples might be really helpful to understand what that means, especially to those really small lots that might be out there that are left. That's kind of concerning. The larger lots probably are easier to deal with, if you're going to do a flat percentage. So maybe that would be helpful to me to understand in, you know, in words or in pictures, what that looks like and means. So that's one, one piece of feedback, and you've heard that from, from the rest of us, too. I do like the idea that there's a differential between the multifamily residential and non-residential development. I still think, you know, this council just agreed to put a lot of multifamily development over off a McCrimmon, and I would, I would expect that we're going to see some out there, so I'd like to make sure that that differential is still there between the two types of development. And I think I already said this, flexibility, I do like flexibility. I think when we're too prescriptive, and I've said this over and over, when we're too prescriptive, I think we miss really good opportunities and miss the ability to get really good, out-of-the-box kind of ideas. So if somehow you figure out how to build in flexibility, and we heard that even in the survey over and over again. And then, I'll say one, two last things. As far as the types of trees, I do think we need to worry about that. I think that matters. You know, I want to preserve those champion trees, those really old specimen trees, but sometimes that, that actually is probably not the best thing to do, because if it's a tree that's reached its lifespan, it's going to die off anyhow, so, and cause problems, like we heard about, where, you know, it can, it can do damage to sidewalks and roadways, and then do real damage when it falls on people and possessions. So, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but, but I, you know, the idea of preserving our specimen trees is important, but it, to what, to what end, I guess? I mean, I think about the, you know, and the types of trees are important, I think about Morrisville Parkway. There was a time where Morrisville Parkway was lined with pear trees, and, you know, they, they did great damage over time, and we at one point took them all out and replaced them with maples, because maples are a longer lifespan. So, you know, there are certain trees that are not worth preserving, because they are detrimental to, again, to people and possessions, so I say that. And then the last thing, I know we talked a little bit about the legislative authority, and you gave us like, just, you know, two bullets on what the General Assembly is doing. I appreciate you reminding us of that, because what the General Assembly does, especially on this issue, matters greatly to us, because they could take our authority away, and that issue is not going away. So I think we need to keep that on our radar, and, and remember what, because you gave us two dates, it came in 18 and what was the other one, 21? It's going to come back again. So I think it's important to keep an eye on that, too. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Chris, this is great conversations, but I am trying to understand from an end-user, a resident, or a person who wants to buy a house. It would be good if I can get examples, like the way you're saying, if it is one acre of land, and then you're putting 30% tree canopy and the setbacks, and like on the front and the back, and the road construction that goes through it. How many lots do you get? Because eventually, these all come back to being affordable. And I'm trying to understand, because sitting here, it's easy, we can tell, but I'm also trying to understand from the cost point of view, you know, if we put 30%, you'll get two lots. If you put 25, you may get three. I'm just, take the same examples, I'm like, you know, for one acre or two acres as an example, because that kind of helps me understand, because tree canopy is one, but you have the roads and the inlays and the sewer and the BMP also that comes into it, so the whole area, so I'm just trying to understand from my point of view, you know, because Wake County, like the News and Observer had a huge front pager affordability in Wake County, you know, the housing and everything. So surprising, our townhomes are almost going to, close to 600,000, and a single-family right back is going for a million bucks, and it'll continue to grow up. And, but I do not want to undermine the importance of tree canopy, and want to see what and how is a delicate balance that it does by increasing it, how much does it reduce the lots or anything? Because everything is a premium that basically squeezes back to the homeowner who's trying to buy it. That's, that's my thought on that. And then I'll put my HOA hat here, and I agree, coming to the type of trees, we should make a rule, like I was walking today with my dog, Bradford pear, you know, the amount of tree canopy it has created, even though like, there's no authority on the single-family, the tree canopy that the good Bradford pear is, is pretty big. But the lifespan of it is 20 years, 25 years, it gets a root rot, and if there is any hurricane or anything, those are the first to go down. Half of my neighborhood has maple, and half has Bradford pear. And the question that comes up is, oh, we have problems with the sewer, which is well pointed, you know, they may go into the sewer line. The replacement trees that are coming up, there's no hard and fast rule. You're just saying it has to be this caliber. People are putting flowering cherries, or like fruit cherries, in front of their houses. So when we are talking about all these things, let's, you know, tighten those rules, too, like with replacement trees and others, that would be town-wide, and you can tell the developer, no Bradford pear. South Carolina, there's some city in South Carolina has that rule, like, you know, they want to give free trees for replacement of Bradford pear, and all kinds of things are going on, but for us, we're not there. But I wanted, since the discussion is coming up, and UDO is not like we get every day to change, let's talk about that particular section, too, so that it helps a lot of the HOAs to go on it.
Okay.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
So I really liked what Vicki said about incentivizing the developers to do, like, let's say that we, I mean, I'm all about a flat thing, I mean, this is a little crazy, but let's say that we decide on a flat rate of 20% of the trees, but if they do 21%, is there something we could, like maybe one less foot of setback, or one foot of wiggle room on the setback, and then if they do 25%, then they could have five feet? Like something like that, where, you know, like, I guess I'm saying, maybe figure out what their top pain point is, and then figure out a way to alleviate that if they do something that we want, which is keep more trees, you know?
Yeah, we can look into that. I think those are all great points, and certainly the folks that design the sites, so like civil engineers, surveyors, they want those setbacks so they can have flexibility. The, the part of that that I always struggle with, that I'm going to look into more, is the financial cost, where's the equilibrium that makes them, makes a developer say, okay, that actually makes financial sense for me? And those are things that I'm, I'm looking into more, but there's certainly, you know, setbacks, total lot coverage, adjustments that could be made to allow for some more of that flexibility. See, I'll, I'll continue to research more of that.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Would one of the options be for the developer to decrease the minimum number of parking lot spaces, parking spaces?
I think that certainly could be a possibility. The, so I'll say, in my professional opinion somewhat, the profession is heading towards, planning profession is heading towards less minimum parking. The tricky issue when I'm tying it personally, when I'm designing a tree regulation versus parking, is they're really two separate issues, so tying them together can be somewhat difficult. But yes, I think so, and, and one of the responses from the developers on the written responses discusses how Raleigh has removed minimum parking standards. So, so yes.
Yeah, because to me, they're tied, because they're both, reducing the number of parking spots is an environment, enhances the environment, because you have less, I can't say today, I need my Diet Coke, but you know what I mean.
Less impervious.
Yes, less impervious, the blacktop, or the less impervious surfaces. So to me, they're tied, and so I think that would be a good option to give the developers.
Yeah. I think that's a good point, and I'll just remind just the whole town council that if, say, the tree preservation minimum is raised and raised significantly, there almost certainly is going to have to be trade-offs elsewhere with some of the regulations.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garamella.
I think Donna brings a good point, but at the same time, you know, Raleigh has a good, you know, public transport system, and that flexibility is much better than smart shuttles that we run. So it comes down to, you're reducing it, it's okay, but do we have that infrastructure in place? You know, this goes, you know, goes on and on, this is, you know, where I grew up, we don't have, like, every apartment is given one place, and some are not. It's a, you had to, you had to bid for it, in places like Bombay, and like, literally, like $150,000 a spot, to just bid for a spot. And otherwise, public transportation is there and they take it. So, so there, like, what I'm trying to say is, just because Raleigh has it, they have something already there, too, along with it, you know? So they can do it. Chapel Hill has a good, you know, bus network, you know, and, and, you know, they have good bike paths, you know, that they keep going on. They can do it. So for us, you know, yes, we'll do it, but at the same time, think of that infrastructure part should be in par.
Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we'd be talking about parking spaces in, like, retail parking spaces, because to me, like townhouse and apartment parking spaces are something different, because the developer is not going to have to live there. And to, like, to let them reduce the parking spaces, so that, like I mean, Satie said, everybody has one, and in my neighborhood, there's a whole group of townhouses, and like, the parking fights over there are insane, because there's not enough parking. And so that, to me, is a concern. I don't want to see more developments like that either. So I want trees and adequate parking, so, you know, we're going to have to cut something else.
So I will say that I am a parking skeptic, but not in townhome neighborhoods, not in dense residential neighborhoods. For commercial sites, generally, yes, I believe most, some park, some commercial, yeah, some commercial sites can have less than the parking that's currently required. But for, for neighborhoods, I believe it should probably be kept the same, more increased.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
So I'm just going to echo those thoughts, too. I was going to add that, too. I think everything we do is a delicate balance, and one, when we, when we act in one arena, affects so many other parts of what we do. And I, you know, I think it's important to recognize that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that this shouldn't be tweaked, and that this is a lofty goal that we, that we need to achieve, but, you know, everything we do when it comes to regulation goes against our goal of trying to do affordable housing, too. So, so, but again, it's a delicate balance, and you really do need to look at the whole picture sometimes. So anyhow, I was just going to add on to that, and then also say, Chris has about 10 more slides, so we should move along, because I think he needs us to weigh in on a few more issues, too.
Okay, move on, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't remember, I think I was on this, what is it, 22? Yes. Okay, so 22, I think we covered that one. The next, okay, so we talked about the number of trees, the next is where they're located. Currently, it's based on the types of trees, whether that be evergreen, deciduous, a larger tree, with no basis on location. So some of the weaknesses of this regulation are that, first thing, I'll say, it's, as a person who's not a complete expert on trees, it is sometimes difficult to regulate and know for certain, outside of trusting a landscape architect who's licensed and sealed or otherwise. The second part is that there have been plans I have reviewed for the town, where the top priority trees are in the middle of the site, and the designer has to work completely around something that's really in a, in a poor spot for them, at least for developing that site. So that, that's just some general things on, on the current standards. What staff and what I've researched and looked into is that it might be better to, the base of priority order on the tree's location on site. Again, I noted this earlier, within some environmental features, wetlands, riparian buffers, flood zones, or adjacent to greenways, other tree preservation zones, residential neighborhoods, if it's a commercial site. Also, kind of, you know, planning staff's been kind of tinkering around with how to require tree preservation near streets, should that be desired. That's, that's the last bullet point there. And again, if, if, you know, if council decides that we want to, the town wants to increase the number of trees, but we want to offer a lot of flexibility, again, a priority zone and a priority order and getting rid of it completely is an option, or any other kind of tweaks. I'll kind of keep moving here, if that's all right with you all, and we can come back. So again, we're, staff's exploring other options for site design flexibility. This is where it gets a little difficult without really truly understanding what some of the town council's goals are. So I've heard a lot of good discussion about this tonight, as far as setbacks, parking, lot coverage. So just some goals of staff recommendations, you know, I think what staff's heard is that more trees should be preserved, with maybe some increase to flexibility in location. It seems to be that groups of trees that are, that become larger groups of trees seems to be preferred. Try to require a portion of the trees along streets to be preserved, kind of giving some visual access, and then provide incentives and some flexibility to developers. Okay, I've got a few more slides here, we're almost finished, though. So let's move on to common open space. Again, this is for non-residential sites, mostly commercial sites, doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be more green space, but it can be combined with tree preservation, but there's a few different options. but there's a few different options. So this is based on the zoning district. The requirement's based on the zoning district. It ranges from 5% to 15%. It's not required for things like parks or indoor recreation facilities. For instance, Wake Competition Center did not have to provide additional common open space. Staff recommendation, kind of observations on this, it is incompatible, sometimes incompatible for all uses and locations, specifically industrial sites. Get a lot of pushback from folks developing industrial sites. You know, they, we have a lot of, they say we have a lot of heavy trucks. We don't really want random pedestrians maybe being invited to the site by some walking trail or bench or something. Another one specifically was a bank who said, you know, this bank said, again, we don't want folks kind of coming and sitting on our site. We've got people going to ATM. We got them coming and going. We don't want people just kind of hanging out on our next door bank. So staff recommendation is to kind of at least narrow the open space requirements to certain uses, maybe a certain size of site. I think earlier in the survey, it talked about maybe removing common open space and just adding those percentage points onto tree preservation somehow. A few different options, but I think the thing I would leave here tonight that I would want council to leave here tonight knowing is that it really kind of does not work for every single use and location. And so staff's exploring some options for that.
Quick question. Do we ever collect PIL in lieu of common open space requirements?
So Planning and Zoning Board asked the same exact question. I don't have a good answer other than to say, I don't know how that would work as far as where that, so PIL is supposed to be spent in the same general area. The town would then have to invest that money into some public good. I'm thinking about that. I was, I was going to have a better answer for Planning and Zoning Board next month. I don't know if that's an appropriate way to administer common open space. I'll say it like that at least.
Okay.
I don't know if that's.
Do we have the authority to do that?
I don't think we, yeah.
Well, that's the answer, then.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Okay, so common open space is just like tree preservation in the sense that it has a priority order currently. It ranges from squares, plazas, formal gardens, utility easements that are usable for recreation, and then stormwater ponds. Staff is, staff's general recommendation is that the town kind of narrow the groups of uses allowed for common open space. So if, if we're going to, if the town's going to require them on less total spaces, so maybe not industrial sites, maybe aim it more at a shopping center, really narrow what the town wants out of common open space and what can be installed as common open space. And then parkland dedication. So got common open space for commercial sites, parkland for residential sites. The town currently gets most parkland dedication as payment in lieu. There's, I have not heard any consensus on whether this needs dramatically changed or not. So right now, really not recommending any changes in the current policy other than to look at the parkland design standards in case someone does want to dedicate land to the town and just make sure that's actually what the town kind of values. So generally, those standards are, you know, at least 50 feet of road frontage for this land, things like that. That is not, you know, very hilly, things like that. Okay, just two slides left. Landscaping. Long story short, for landscaping, staff's really looking at ways to encourage developers to use existing trees as landscaping buffers. Really, other than that, few anticipated changes, other than some maybe other clarification, cleanup items. That's, that's kind of what we're looking at as far as landscaping. And then last slide, next steps. Again, after tonight, really hoping to get, get the first draft of proposed text finalized, get it online for review. Again, that's for anyone that can get on the town's website, look at the draft. And then May 12th is, is the first meeting staff proposing to really have specific amendments ready for a public body to examine, to question. So that, that would be the Planning and Zoning Board, May 12th. They could recommend approval, denial, or suggest changes. They could also ask to hear the item again at the June meeting. So this body may hear the amendments in June, maybe July might be later. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and start. If you could go to slide 26. I think I got the wrong one. Maybe it was 25. The one where their staff recommendation, there we go. So of these three, I support all of them, except I'm not, I don't really care one or the other about require trees to be preserved in larger groups. So that's less important to me than the other three. When it comes to common open space, instead of actually just giving industrial and banks a pass, I'd be interested in just saying, okay, plant trees there. Whatever that amount of space was, there are trees. But other people, where common open space can be used by the residents. I mean, as much as possible, we want McCrimmon to be a place where everyone can go and enjoy. So we're hoping for more plazas, more benches, more trails and things like that. So for those who really push back hard on having any kind of common open space, I would say trees. For everyone else, let's keep on going with plazas and common open space for how his description is for everyone to enjoy. So those would be my hopes for that. Councilmember Garmella, please.
Yeah, I think the reason I know for sure require trees to be preserved in larger groups, especially this part of the region has a lot of pine trees. And when you try to go into the pine tree and try to preserve some and remove some, I have seen like they snap and they don't have that and they fall on houses. So it's more of a safety, especially dealing with pines, like to leave the entire area. When you try to mingle, just try to do it, Breckenridge had that, like the developer left a lot of pines in the middle and they all over a period of time, they fell down. And so indirectly, even though you're trying to preserve, the trees are gone, you know, or like especially when you have high winds and other things, they're lost. That's, that's one of the reasons I have seen it with experience.
Looking for any other comments for Mr. Lawson or suggestions, thoughts? Mayor Pretum Johnson?
I was just going to say, it's always, it's always easier to react to something. So when you come back with, with these recommendations kind of really spelled out and hopefully with samples of what, what it would mean for different properties, I think that would be really helpful for me anyhow to determine, you know, what I'm, I would be comfortable with or, or not as we're tweaking the ordinance.
Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree with your, the staff recommendations here for the tree preservation, providing incentives and flexibility. And then also your recommendations for the open areas and the parkland section.
Okay, any final thoughts, Mr. Lawson?
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
We really appreciate all the hard work that's going into this. And as was noted, there's going to be a fine balance between these regulations and the development community would like them to be less, obviously. And affordable housing is also in the back of our minds. And how can we find that balance? So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you all.
We are now at item 12. Would we like to, we've been going a while. Would we like to take a ten minute break now? Everybody? Or you want to go through a few more things?
No, let's power through. This will be quick.
Actually, I should be.
Okay, sounds good. That being the case, we're at public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
No comments were received.
Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No, sir.
Anyone in the room like to? I don't really see any residents, so I think we're all set on that. Moving on to item 13, action items. There's one action item on tonight's agenda, a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of two thirds bonds and voted bonds. Nancy Emesley, Finance Director, will facilitate.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Here we are again. Although this is, this is the last of the series of, of part of our whole bond issuance and bond sale. So tonight is the culmination of all those months of hard work. So just to tell you that we, as you know, we've been busy working. We had a, we met with you on March 8th. And you adopted the preliminary findings resolution, introduced the bond order, directed the filing of the sworn statement of debt and the statement of total estimated interest. We set a public hearing for March 22nd. And we also directed the publication of the two thirds bond order. On the 22nd, we actually held that public hearing and we adopted a second reading for the two thirds bond order previously introduced. Tonight, we are actually going to be making a motion regarding the two third bond resolution and the voted bonds as well. So that is something that we need to do in order to issue and sell the bonds. We need to do these two final resolutions. And in your packet was a resolution that contains a lot of boilerplate language, but it's necessary for the bond issuance sale. As you'll see, there are a lot of places that do not sign, do not sign. And that's because we cannot actually execute this document until after we sell the bonds. So I will work with bond counsel. They will actually update that information because it needs interest information, it needs accusative information, it needs underwriting information. So all that information, again, was just a boilerplate for you. It will be finalized and then certified by the town clerk once we have that final document back from bond counsel. What I did want to bring to your attention tonight was that our financial advisors and our bond councils let me know that in the resolution, we have two amounts switched. So on section 1D, which is on page 12 of the actual resolution itself, it's showing that the Parks and Recs bond was 4.2, when it should have been 4.3 million and vice versa for the, the street, the street bonds was 4.3 and it should be 4.2. So I have for you a revised motion that I thought might be helpful since what we were advised by bond counsel tonight is that we would just have the motion that you make reflect the, the change that was made that was as corrected by staff. So I have, I have a revised motion that I would give to you for, for your action for this evening. And that would, that way we won't have to come back to you again. Because if we, if we voted on what, on the document as it stands now, I'd have to come back to you again and say, we need to switch those numbers. So we wanted to try to take care of that tonight and have that all done for you. So as I mentioned, I do have that information for you. And I just wanted to also mention, we did it. We got our credit rating information back from all three agencies. We maintain our AAA and very, 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 very pleased and proud, proud for that. So, so I wanted to end on a high note in that regard. So, so mayor, may I give you the revised motions for you?
Yeah.
And one for you, Eric, as well?
Can walk that up. Who would like to make this motion?
I'll make it. I'm on the end.
But first, you have, you have, you have two motions. So the first motion is fine. So there's a motion for, for the two thirds bond. That is fine. And so you would make that motion for that. That script did not change. But for the voted bonds, that's where we have to make the, the change in how, and how we, and how you vote on that this evening.
Okay, so should I ask Councilmember Robati to read off the screen for the first motion? Is that what we're doing first? Or am I misunderstanding?
Yes, we need to do the, the two thirds bond and then, and then we would need to do the voted bonds as far as motions for this evening. And you're voting on them.
Did we get a second? So she needs to read what's on the paper in front of her.
On the screen first, though.
For the, for the two thirds bond, you can read it exactly as it's on the screen. But for the voted bonds, you need to use the revised handout that I just gave you this evening.
Okay.
She made the motion.
Are we clear?
And I would like to make a mention that bond counsel will, will revise, revise this when, and update it when we finalize the document. So it will reflect, reflect correctly the numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so how about I make the first motion?
Perfect.
Okay. Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-63B of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining for the sale and issuance of two thirds bonds and voted bonds.
No, just two third bonds.
I'm sorry, two third bonds.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second from Councilmember Garmella. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously, 7-0. Now, is there a motion and second to adopt the resolution providing for sale and issuance of not to exceed $16,500,000 public improvement bonds, Series 2022B as corrected by staff in section 1D to reflect 4.3 million in parks and recreation and amenity improvement bonds and 4.2 million streets, sidewalk, and connectivity improvement bonds? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati.
I hereby make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-63-B, adopting the resolution providing for sale and issuance of not to exceed $15,500,000 in public improvement bonds, Series 2022B, as corrected by staff in section 1D to reflect $4.3 million in parks and recreation and amenity improvement bonds and $4.2 million in streets, sidewalk, and connectivity improvement bonds.
So I have a quick question. I heard 15.5. Did anyone else hear 15.5? Can you say 16.5?
I thought I heard 16.5.
Okay, then I apologize. I misheard. So we have a motion, yeah, I know, sorry. I, we have a motion on the table. Waiting a second. I have a second.
Second was by whom, please?
Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. I have to record this, that's why. Thank you.
Of course. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, actually, I have one question.
Yes.
So the sale and issuance not to exceed $16,500,000, but the 4.3 million and the 4.2 million only add up to 8.5?
Eight million is for the public safety bonds, which, which is correct as it stands in the resolution.
Okay.
And I should have, I should have made that distinction for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0 again. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was a lot of work and congratulations on the credit rating agencies as well. I'd like to give everyone a quick second if they want to say something or.
Yeah, I was, can we give, can we give our staff a hand? I mean, I think that's pretty.
Yes, I think we all, it was truly a team effort. I mean, this is something that I was quarterbacking it, but it, I was, it was not done in a vacuum. It was not done just by yours truly. It was really done by several members of, of Morrisville and several departments had helped with, with, with not only the, the things that went to the LGC, but the credit rating agency. It really was a team effort by Morrisville staff.
Quarterback's usually the MVP, Nancy. Take the win.
Yes, absolutely. I just want to express my thanks to Nancy for doing just that, quarterbacking this process. It's a long process. And Nancy is correct, it took all of us, town manager, the deputy town manager. We even brought our fiscal recovery officer in the room, our controller, Mark Stevenson, which is on Nancy's team. But really Nancy kept the things, kept things going for us. She kept us facilitated and moving in the right direction. And I think we would be remiss in not thanking Davenport, our financial advisors, for always giving us good guidance and leadership there. And of course, our.
Bond counsel.
Bond counsel as well. They, they are, they are wise beyond years and they always got us clear and straight. So I just want to thank everybody, most especially thank Nancy for, for keeping us straight. And thank council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Now we're at item 14, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. I have pages here, so I'm just going to do quick highlights. As was mentioned by Detective Grady, Grady, tomorrow morning, join the Morrisville Police Department at 10:00 AM right across the street in Greenway for Child Abuse Prevention Month Ceremony. Soon after that, join the Morrisville Police Department as they conduct their second annual roadway cleanup, April 13th, from 12:00 to 1:00 on McCrimmon Parkway. Wednesday is a very active day around town. We'll also conduct a summer job fair at Cedar Forest Community Center. That's Wednesday, the 13th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, looking for lots of different positions. And on Saturday, April 16th, from 10:00 till 1:00. This Thursday afternoon, April 14th, we'll be holding our annual Easter egg hunt at Morrisville Community Park from 5:30 PM until 7:00 PM. Easter egg hunt will be split by age groups, ages two to four from, at 5:30, 6:00 PM, ages five to seven, and 6:30 PM, ages eight to 10. On-site parking will be available, so please try to get there early. As an FYI, the Morrisville Smart Shuttle will not be operating on Friday, April 15th. Morrisville residents have the opportunity, opportunity to get certified, the Community Emergency Response Team. So please look at our website and type in CERT if you're interested in that. Until May 2nd, you can practice your Until May 2nd, you can practice your disc golf skills at a pop-up disc golf basket at Morrisville Community Park. Beautiful days coming up, so try that. For even more disc golf and cornhole, visit the Western Wake Farmers Market this Saturday. They're having a big Easter event. They're under summer hours now, from 8:00 AM until 12:00 noon. There will be an Easter egg hunt and other things going on from 10 till 11:45. Arts and crafts projects and an Easter egg surprise for adults at Western Wake Farmers Market. Celebrate Earth Day with Town of Morrisville on Friday, April 22nd, with a free viewing of the movie Dr. Seuss's The Lorax in Morrisville Community Park. Gates will open at 7:00 PM and the movie will begin at 8:00 PM. And the celebration will continue as Town of Morrisville will honor the earth by having an Earth Day celebration and Green Day event on Saturday, April 30th. So please look at all our social media for all of those different events, townofmorrisville.org. This time we're at council and manager comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
I have no comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Um, I'm, sorry. No comments. Well, I have one comment, I'm sorry. Actually, let everyone go and I'll, if you, if you mind, can I go after you? Can I just go a little?
Of course.
Let everyone go and I'll go after.
Mayor Protam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rao.
So tonight, council read a proclamation recognizing National Child Abuse Prevention Month in, in the month of April. And we all have a stake and can take a very active part in preparing our children to grow up in a healthy, to be healthy and thriving members of our community. And often when we, when we hear about proclamations like this and we know that it's an important issue to help the most precious and vulnerable and potentially vulnerable in our community, we also at the same time wonder how to do it. And so you heard about this event tomorrow morning that's open to the public at 10 o'clock here that our police department is sponsoring. But you can also go out to preventchildabuseNC.org. It's an organization that has all kinds of fabulous information so that you can, if you choose to educate yourself on the issue and what you can do. They're also sponsoring a virtual presentation on Wednesday, April 20th, that is also open to the public. It's a statewide webinar, so please go out to preventchildabuseNC.org to learn more about Child Prevention Awareness Month and especially the webinar on April 20th. Also, it is spring, so that means there are lots of festivals and celebrations. And of course, we celebrated Holy not too long ago. April 1st started the month of Ramadan, so I wanna say Ramadan Mubarak to those that celebrate. This Friday starts Passover, so happy Passover to those that celebrate. And of course, we're in Holy Week, so happy Easter to those that celebrate.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao?
Happy Easter, Passover, Ramadan to everybody. I wanted to, once again, pray for Dorcas Ministries for mourning the loss of Howard Manning. And I can't think of a better way to honor his legacy than investing in affordable housing. So hopefully we'll do that as a council. I wanna congratulate Panta Creek Men's Tennis for winning their first conference title in seven years, tying Greenhope, who had the honor of working with the team this year. And it was great to be there for that great moment last week. And I wanted to thank staff and Councilmember Garamella and the council members for meeting with the school board and whatever you guys, whatever we can do to continue to address the park side situation. And if staff can eventually update us on the $300,000 of small business appropriations which the town got through Congresswoman Ross's efforts. My final two things is, we've been talking about, about Earth Day and it was amazing. I actually visited a company last week named Sustion, which is in Cary. And I actually heard Bill Gates talk about this technology on Fareed Zakaria. And the company that he actually invested in is on the Morrisville Cary border. And they've invested 10 million. It's a Bill Gates fund called Breakaway Energy Ventures. And what's amazing is they focus on carbon sequestration, which is taking the carbon out of the air and putting it in the ground and converting natural gas into hydrogen. So I've invited the CEO, Shantanu Agarwal, to maybe come and visit us and maybe have host a visit where he can have the council and the sustainability team kind of view this really great innovation for sustainability right here in North Carolina. And on May 5th, I'm gonna be hosting an event with Secretary James Weaver in the afternoon for a tech talk about the, about broadband and smart cities and just technology in general. So the final thought, and then I'm gonna stop, is I just want us to give some thought to, I'm just gonna socialize this, social media policy for our advisory committees. I know we've talked about it in the past. And I think it's important because it sets a standard in terms of folks that are applying for the committee and the kinds of expectations and standards we have amongst ourselves as councilmembers. I think as time has gone on, I've seen social media posts and, and things get really negative towards other committee members, towards other councilmembers. And so I just think it's time to do that, you know, the sooner the better. Just my opinion, some of you may not agree with me, but just based on what I've been observing, I think the sooner we do it, the better for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe staff has that on our rolling calendar, so that is on the agenda. I think there's support for taking a look at that. So thank you. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scruggan Johnson?
No comments.
Councilmember Scruggan Johnson?
I have comments. So history, especially Morrisville history, is very important to me and many of our residents and businesses. And I just learned that Ernest Dollar, who is the Executive Director of the City of Raleigh Museum, and also one of the historians that have regularly visited Morrisville and shared history as recently as last year at the Juneteenth Celebration, has published a book and it was released in March. For those of you that are not familiar, Ernest also published a book, his very first book, and it was the History of Morrisville. And it's this lovely book that has pictures and stories and so forth. But this second book, which was released in March, is not all about Morrisville. It's called Hearts Torn Asunder: Trauma in the Civil War's Final Campaign in North Carolina. And I just wanted to read one of the sentences from one of the many reviews he's received already. It's a, a wonderful, engaging and relevant read. This focused study into the psychological trauma that war inflicted on both the Union and Confederate soldiers and civilians in the end of days of the Civil War in North Carolina. Morrisville is in this book as well. And so if you're interested in history of North Carolina and history of Morrisville, this would be an important read. He, he has a very balanced way of telling the story and it's a narrative of a personal testimony. So it, it's not all sugar coated. It's kind of a gritty read, but it's really nice to see that he has been able to put this together. He's been working for years doing talks and narratives and now he's finally put it pen to paper. So congratulations, Ernest. We appreciate all your work for the Town of Morrisville.
Excellent. True. Really nice guy. As was mentioned, we lost a true community servant recently. Dorcas Ministries Director and Chair of the Western Regional Community Advocacy Committee and many other boards. Howard Manning died of pneumonia, leaves behind a legacy of important work, which has made our community better in so many ways. We all miss him and our thoughts go out to his wife Pam and their family. Thank you to TANA for their 5K fundraiser on Saturday. And a separate thank you to John Wei, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce and the Chinese American Friendship Association and others for introducing myself and Councilmember Rao to the Chinese ambassador on Sunday. It is my hope that China will use their considerable influence to promote an end to hostilities and the continued independence of sovereign nations. Thank you to Tony Victor and the Clean Water Education Partnership and the countless volunteers who participated in Stream Cleans, the Biothon, the Stormwater Runoff 5K and Storm During Marking all around town as part of the Regional Creek Week. I am happy that the NC State Wolf Pack Women's Basketball Team made it to the Elite Eight and two other local teams made it to the Final Four with UNC Chapel Hill. My daughter's Katie's alma mater coming up just short in the championship game, actually a little wide of the rim. But congratulations to all on a great season. I'm looking forward to the Carolina Hurricanes playoffs. They've made the playoffs and like to be at PNC when our Hurricanes lift the Stanley Cup and triumph once again. Trying to get people to think of the Hurricanes as our team since they do practice here in Morrisville at Wake Competition Center. And our Parks and Rec Department has installed a disc golf basket on the main field of Morrisville Community Park. Earlier today, I finished mapping and uploading a nine-hole course, which you can see a map of on my social media, or even better, you can access this course on the UDisc app. It's a little less than a mile in length in total and it's a really enjoyable walk in the park. That's open from dawn till dusk until Monday, May 2nd. And now Councilmember Robati.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to extend my best wishes for a speedy recovery and thanks for his service to Officer Rodriguez, who was injured in the line of duty on April 11th. And happy Easter, happy Passover, Ramadan Mubarak. Thank you.
Okay. That's from all of us. Well said. Town Manager Page, any comments?
Yes, sir. Through the mayor, we received a request from Wake Tech to support a request that they are making to our, the legislatures at the federal government, Senator Burr and Tillis and Representatives Price and Ross. They are advocating for an EV charging training system and have asked for us to write letters of support for that program and are looking for council's support for that. Also wanted to just verify, staff is also looking at potential projects to submit. We would do that through Congresswoman Ross's office. We are not prepared to share which ones we're putting forth, but was making sure that our projects would not compete with their projects and did affirm that. And I also anticipate that tomorrow, we will receive a request from Wake County. They are gonna submit some design funding requests for the Triangle Bike Way as well and will be requesting our support. And of course, with our resolution, we will take care of that. So just wanted to sort of make sure council was comfortable with endorsing those Wake Tech projects and the Triangle Bike Way and then staff would handle that behind the scenes.
So just looking for consensus, head nods. I think Wake Tech has shown to be a really great partner and I think we're happy to support those letters.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone for that. Anything else from staff for the good of the order? Town Manager Page? Nope? Okay. Now, we have three closed sessions this evening, so I'll do the adjournment words first and then I'll have one large motion for that. Thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. We don't plan to do any other public business after our closed sessions, so thank you for joining us. At this point, I would entertain a motion to go into three closed sessions. It can be one large motion. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao.
Okay. Frank, just, I can combine it into one motion, right? Just cite the statute. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318-11A, 3, A5 and A6, I move that we go into closed session to discuss an attorney-client privilege matter, an economic development matter and a real property acquisition matter.
Could I ask you to amend that to make A3, 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 A4 and A5?
A3, A5 and, oh yeah, A3, sorry. Let me start over.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
It's A3, A4 and A5, right? Okay. So pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318-11A, 3, A4 and A5, I move that we go into closed session to discuss an attorney-client privilege matter, an economic development matter and a real property acquisition matter.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, unanimously seven zero. It is 9:02. We are now in closed session. Thank you to all the staff who helped us through the night. And we're gonna take a quick 15-minute break as well and reconvene at 9:18. Thank you.
All right. All right. All right.